I call this budget work session to order. Will you take attendance, Ms. Sersa, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onvy.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we, the agenda be approved as written.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I, any discussion? Hearing, Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So that leads us into the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget discussion, and I will turn it over to Dr. Heron and her team.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's our pleasure this evening to give you a preliminary budget outlook for next year, and I'd like to formally introduce Mr. Jarrett, who's our interim CFO and has helped us get ready for this evening, will be the main presenter this evening of the information. And without much further conversation, I'm going to hand straight over to him.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Heron. As she, as Dr. Heron said, this is going to be your first look at the 2020 budget. We're going to be presenting to you tonight some preliminary information, and this information is going to change in the weeks ahead, but it's a first look, if you will. You're going to be, tonight, we're going to have several people presenting, okay? I'll start out, and then I'll be introducing other folks as we go, and they'll be coming up, I guess, to this chair right over here. So we've got numerous players, if you will, participating in the presentation tonight. I would like to say that this presentation was prepared by the senior leadership team under the guidance of Dr. Heron. A lot of work has gone into this over a period of probably two to three weeks, and, but it's the most current information that's available. This information will change. I do want you to realize that. What you're seeing tonight is not set in concrete. It's going to change over the next probably month to two months. There's a lot yet to happen to occur. So with that, I would also like to say is, please feel free to ask questions as we go. It's probably the best way to do it so that we can address any particular questions or concerns while we're on that particular slide.
Just before we get started, Mr. Jarrett, I think a couple of board members may have a statement that they wish to read before we go into the discussion of the budget that we've discussed.
Thank you, Dr. Heron.
My pleasure.
As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2019, 2020 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I, too, would like to make a statement and say that as a matter, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2019, 2020 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. I apologize for getting, for forgetting that earlier. So thank you. Continue. Jarrett, thank you.
Okay. The first slide we're going to look at is the agenda for tonight, okay? We've got it broken down into various categories. Background information, then we're going to look at the projected enrollment. We're going to take a look at preliminary revenue, and then we'll look at some major operating costs, and then we're going to sum it up in one slide, essentially one slide at the very end with the summary of the revenue and expenditure outlook, and that is going to be probably one of the most important slides that you will see tonight. Then we're going to talk about what next steps are. So first, let's get into the category of background information. There's a couple of state code sections that are applicable to school divisions as they begin to prepare their budgets. The first one is, you are required by law to submit a budget to the local governments by April the first of each year. So everything that we do in terms of budget work sessions and hearings is all geared towards meeting that timeline. The second thing that is very important is, you have a duty per state code to present a budget that meets the needs of the school division. I do like to remind folks though that there's also, it's not a state requirement, but there is, and I guess you might say, a implied requirement that you work within the fiscal parameters that you're under in your locality, because you don't have taxing authority, so you do have to work with your local governments in terms of what is fiscally feasible to do in your, in your, in their locality. So that's an important consideration as you look at developing a budget of need. At the local level, what you look at is your strategic plan. The official title of that is Elevate Beyond Excellence, and that is what guides the superintendent and the senior staff in preparing their budget document, is making sure that what they bring forward is in compliance and meets the objectives of that plan. In addition to that, we also look at any identified needs that might be in the division. The timeline that we use is one that probably doesn't, this slide probably doesn't give it justice. It says October to November. It really begins before that. You have a CIP process that begins long before that, and also staff members are beginning to formulate their requests prior to October. But in October, November timeframe, they are submitting their request into the system, so in December, the senior leadership, leadership team and the superintendent can start reviewing those requests with those members. Now, in December, that's typically when it's, when it's done, but it's also done in January. In fact, we have spent the better part of this week working on, on budget. So it goes on into January. It's not just, these timelines are not, I guess you might say delineated perfectly. These things blend into different months. And then, of course, we're into January, and that's where we are tonight. This is your first work session on the fiscal year 20 budget. You have another one coming up later this month. So this marks really the beginning of the process for presenting it to the public and to the school board. The next area we want to talk about is an area that, it's, it's still background information, but it's probably one of the more important pieces of information that you will look at when it relates to school divisions, and in particular with Williamsburg James City County. The local composite index is a measure that the state uses to determine each locality's ability to pay for public education. So every locality in the state, every school division in the state, has a different composite index, okay? It's based on the factors that are in that particular locality. The highest you can get in a composite index is a point eight, okay? You can go all the way down. I think it, I think it does have a bottom on it, too. It might be point two. I don't recall exactly what it is, but there is a bottom to it. The important thing about the LCI is, it's got an inverse relationship to state revenue. Now, what do I mean by that? As the, as the LCI goes up, state revenue goes down. Now, if you look at Williamsburg's composite index for 2020, it's point seven seven oh three. Let me try to encapsulate what that really means. That means for every dollar of SOQ cost that the division incurs, the state picks up roughly twenty-three cents of that cost. The other seventy-seven cents is paid for, should be paid for by the city of Williamsburg. Same thing with James City County. The James City County composite index is point five six five seven. So if you flip that and you say, okay, if one dollar of SOQ cost is applicable, then they should be picking up roughly forty-three cents of that. So it's, is a, it's a very important index, and I just want to give you some, I looked this up just recently. I was curious to know what some of the composite indexes were in this region. To give you an idea, in York County, it's point three eight two two. In Newport News, it's point two seven eight one. In Hampton, point two seven four one. Gloucester, point three eight four one. Virginia Beach, point four oh four six. What this tells you is that, according to the state measure, Williamsburg and James City County has a much higher ability to pay for public education than our surrounding school districts. Another thing I, I was interested in knowing is, how far at, from the top is Williamsburg and James City County as far as the composite index goes? Williamsburg is in the top fifteen of the one hundred and thirty-four school divisions in, in the state for composite index. So that's a pretty high number. James City County is in the top twenty-five. Now, I'm telling you this because it's important to realize that state revenue that flows to school divisions flows mainly based on this LCI, the local composite index. So as you look at other localities, for example, Hampton and Newport News, and even York and Gloucester, where their composite indexes are significantly less, they're going to be seeing more state revenue flow to them than you will. Any questions about the LCI, this, this part of it?
Just for the public's viewing, could you talk a little bit about, this is just for SOQ funding, and SOQ is sort of below what anyone would want for their school divisions. Could you just speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Yeah, the SOQ requirements are minimal. In fact, I haven't looked at the numbers here, but I would be willing to bet that you probably have teacher, you have at least fifty or more teachers that are beyond the SOQ requirements, probably more than that. Now, what does that mean? When you have staff that exceeds the SOQ requirements, because they're so minimal, when you have staff that exceeds that, the state does not participate in those costs at all. That is borne one hundred percent by the local government. Now, I don't have any specific examples of the SOQ requirements, but I can tell you that they are very, my recollection is at the K three level, is it, what is it, one to twenty? Who can help me out with this? I think it, I think it's one to twenty. Ratio is one to twenty. Does anyone know? Yeah, the SOQ requirement, SOQ requirement.
Ottawa's.
One to eighteen? Well, in any event, in any event, what can be done is you can calculate the number of SOQ positions that you are exceeding, and I am sure you're exceeding the SOQ requi, I know you're on, are on the support side, and I would be willing to bet on the instructional side, you way exceed the number of SOQ positions as well. And that's not unusual. I mean, that's across the state. Every school division in the state. When I was in York, it was, it was close to seventy-five teachers that exceeded SOQs. So it's, it's a standard thing. It's because the SOQs are so minimal. And even if you have a teacher, say you have teachers that meet the SOQ requirements, the amount that the state reimburses is even less than what you pay, because they use a state linear average, which goes back two years. So the calculation of how much a salary is using the SOQ cost is much less than what school divisions is actually paying as well. So yes, there's a lot of factors that go into that, and we're actually going to talk a little bit about some SOQ changes that come up tonight as well. But it is a, it's a major problem in terms of the state funding for education in Virginia because the SOQs are so minimal. Okay, another look at the LCI, just looks at it from the standpoint of trend information. And so if you look at Williamsburg, they were at point eight all the way from two thousand and fiscal year two, all the way to fiscal year fourteen, excuse me, sixteen. Now, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's gone down a little bit over the last couple of biennium, but it's not a whole lot, but it has gone down. Now, what I think is going on here is, back, if you recall, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten timeframe, when the recession was taking hold, Northern Virginia really suffered significantly, and that caused their composite indexes to go down, and everyone else in the state went up. That was when the state put that whole harmless in place for the LCI. The reason I mention that is because Northern Virginia right now, I think, is doing pretty well, from the information I've been able to gather, and, and sales tax information as well. And so I think it's very possible that when the biennium is recal, when the LCI is recalculated for the next biennium, if they are doing better than the rest of the state, your composite index will continue on that downward, downward trend, because the Northern Virginia, in all fairness, they drive this LCI, because that's where the most of the wealth is in the state. So if they are going up significantly higher, then ours will go down because it's based on the state average. And if they are higher than the state average, that pushes everyone else down. So that's a good thing. So the composite index for James City County has been fairly stable over the last few biennium. So hopefully, hopefully, when you start developing your 2021 budget, you'll have some good news dealing with the LCI. Okay, we're going to move into a different section now, a new section of enrollment. And I know you've already received some enrollment information. I believe it is at your November work session. But what I'm going to, this graph here will, will show you what the, the projection is for enrollment for fiscal year twenty. Now, this says 2019, but that's the projection for September thirtieth of 2019. That is the number that you use for developing your budget. Now, Future Think Consultant has come in and done their analysis, and they're projecting eleven thousand four hundred and seventy students. Now, eleven thousand four hundred and seventy students is only nine students more than what you actually had on, in September of 2018. Okay, so it's only a non-student increase. Now, that sounds like, not a whole lot, but here's the good part of it. The good news with that is that most school divisions in the state are seeing a reduction in enrollment. So your enrollment is fairly stable. So that is a very positive sign, and I think it speaks to families and, and folks wanting to come to Williamsburg James City County to have their kids educated in your school system. Now, the eleven four seventy, as it compares to the budget that you're working under right now, the fiscal year nineteen budget, it was based on eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-two students. So from budget to budget, it's a twenty-two student reduction. Now, twenty-two students is not a significant number, but it does play out when we start talking about the state revenue, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Now, here's another way at looking at the enrollment projection. If you look at it by level, and if you compare the 2018 numbers to the 2019 numbers, you'll see that they are very close. There's not a whole lot of change taking place, and these numbers should be able to be accommodated within the staffing that you already have in place. So effectively, what I'm saying is, is that your student-teacher ratio should not be impacted for regular education as a result of the enrollment that's being projected for FY twenty. Now, let's move into revenue. This is going to be a first look at revenue projections for the school division. And of course, the first thing, the most important, well, not the most important, but, but the, a significant area is the governor's proposed budget. As you know, in December, Governor Northam released his proposed budget. Now, it's not a new budget. What he released are amendments to the budget that was approved a year ago by the General Assembly. So his amendments taken, consider several areas of change, and we'll talk about each one of those areas in a second. But right now, he's projecting state sales tax to go up, his staff is, by over a million dollars for this, for Williamsburg James City County. That is a significant increase, a large increase. And so that, right there, in and of itself, is a major boost, if you will, for state revenue for the school division. If you go down right below that, you'll see standards of quality. Now, standards of quality is going down by three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Now, that's unusual to see that, but there's some reasons for that. First reason is, remember, twenty-two less students is from budget to budget. We've got to crank that in. There's also, right now, a preliminary data is showing a shift of students from James City County to Williamsburg. Now, Williamsburg, remember, their composite index is much higher than James City County's. So that affects the standards of quality amount. And the third area is the sales tax. When you look at basic aid, the basic aid formula, it takes in consideration your sales tax. So as it goes up, basic aid goes down. That's a hard concept to get. But if, the way it works, though, if your sales tax goes up, your basic aid goes down. So if you look at this amongst all the school divisions in the state, assuming their enrollment's not growing, you're going to see their SOQ dollars going down, but their sales tax going up considerably because of the way the formula works. The next area is categorical, categorical incentive, and this is the one that's gotten a lot of discussion and, and press, I guess, in recent weeks. The governor has proposed two, two items related to this. First, he's proposed a five percent average increase for SOQ positions. That's both instructional and support positions. Now, that five percent increase can be met over the biennium. Won't have to meet all that in one year, and if you think back for this year, you provided a three percent increase for employees. So you will not have to do the full five, but we will talk about it a little bit later, some of the reasons why you might want to take a look at doing more than a two percent increase, if you will, five percent less the three. The second, and that accounts for about a million four of that one point nine million dollars in categorical incentive revenue growth. So about a million four of that is the five percent compensation supplement. The other component of that is the lottery proceeds. I like to, I like to believe that the big lottery numbers that have been cranking out this past year are the reason it's going up, but the lottery dollars are projected to go up over three hundred thousand dollars for, for this school division. And that's, that's another positive item. And I'm really pleased to say that it was two years ago, I believe, where the, when the General Assembly and the governor approved, lottery dollars are not really designated for particular purposes now. They are set in a pot of money that the school division can determine how you choose to use that. And that was a major step forward from the way lottery dollars were distributed prior to that. So the total state revenue excluding sales tax is projected to go up one and a half million dollars. You add the sales tax increase to that, your sales, your, your total state revenue looks like an increase of about two point five million dollars, which is a five point three percent increase, so, which is a fairly good increase given it's the second year of the biennium. Now, we're going to look at not just the state component, but also the local component. So you see up top the two point five million dollars with the governor's proposed budget, and that's based on a five percent salary adjustment over the biennium. And then right below this, you'll see the FY twenty local appropriations based on proposed budgets. So I want to tell you how this number was derived. James City County prepares a biennial budget, and their budget for fiscal year twenty has in it an amount of one thou, one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars as a contribution to the school division. So that's roughly, using the percentages that are preliminary at this point, that works out to be a ninety point five three percent percentage, which means that Williamsburg James City County would pick up the other difference, which is nine point four seven percent, which is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So those are very preliminary numbers. I've talked to county staff, and they do anticipate revising these numbers. They're going to be updating their projections over the next month or so, so these numbers are going to change. Even the percentage could very well change, because they're looking at the, the students that will be from Williamsburg and the students that will be for James City County, and that's where they come up with those percentages. So these numbers will change, but right now, what we're working with is one point six million dollars, giving us a grand total of state and local revenue projection of four point one million dollars. Okay, let's move into the other side of the, the general ledger, if you will, and start talking about some potential major operating expenditure increases. Now, I want to tell you, we are not looking at everything tonight. What we're going to look at tonight is basically compensation and mandatory expenditures, plus health insurance. So those are the three main areas we're going to look at tonight. Okay, first, let's talk about that compensation supplement that the governor has proposed, okay? He's proposed a five percent to be effective July one, two thousand and nineteen. We can meet that, as I said before, over the biennium. You, you have already done a three percent, so you really don't have to do technically a minimum of a two percent in order to meet the requirement. The cost of doing a one percent salary adjustment for eligible staff is one million dollars for the school division. So if you do a full five percent, the cost would be five million dollars. So it's a very easy calculation. What percent you want to do, you, you work it through based on one million dollars for each, and that does include the fringe benefits associated with the increase. The required minimum is a two percent, as we talked about just re, just now. The last bullet is the bullet that I think is probably one of the more important aspects that you got to remember, and that is, the school division must take into consideration compensation competitiveness for attracting and retaining staff. Mr. Baker presented to the school board, I believe it was back in November, some comparative data on the teacher pay scale. And I looked at that study, and I pulled out one of the key points that, that he put in that, that analysis, which was, out of nine regional school divisions, Williamsburg James City County ranked seventh in the BA entry level pay and ninth in the MA entry level pay for teachers. So what this is saying is that, that, let me, let me try approaching it from this angle. Let's say you did a two percent increase for your staff. You did the bare minimum, okay? One step on the teacher pay plan equates to about one and a half percent average. Now, if you did a two percent and you did a step for your teachers, that would leave a half of a percentage point for what I'm calling, I will call external equity. That's working off with your pay plan, adjusting your pay plan up to be competitive. Now, this is a concept, it may be a little bit difficult, but if, when you give a step, you don't necessarily increase your competitiveness with other school divisions, because all you're doing is moving staff up, say, from step eight to step nine. What you're doing there is you're keeping your internal equity fair. In other words, if I'm a teacher, I have eight years of service, okay, I should make more than a teacher to make, that has seven years of service. That's the concept behind, behind a step system. So when you award a step, that doesn't help you when it comes to competitiveness. I will call it external equity when you're comparing to other school division. But it does help you with internal equity when employees are looking at their position relative their year, to their year, their years of experience. So when you talk about external equity, if you're working with a half of a percent of an increase, and remember, the composite index and some of those other localities you're comparing to is much lower than here. So they may be in a position to do better than a two percent if they did a three percent this year. So if they are, then you have now fallen by, further behind in your competitiveness. So you've got to keep an eye out for this, and you're already in some areas of your skill, probably further behind than you would like to be. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is this, is that a two percent minimum adjustment is just that. It's a minimum. I would like to think that you would strive to do something better than that, to address some of these areas in your pay scale, and also to keep an eye on what other localities are doing, so you don't lose ground as, as you start moving through this process.
Before you move on to the next slide, I just want to confirm, the first bullet talks about for eligible staff. That means people who are not, haven't already reached the top of the scale. Is that correct?
Well, that would be one group. It also, it doesn't, I, that was put in there to make it clear that, for example, substitutes, they're not a part of this pay increase. This is really for, like, full-time permanent staff. It also, it doesn't, that was put in there to make it clear that, for example, substitutes, they're not a part of this pay increase. This is really for, like, full-time, permanent staff. People on the teacher pay plan, people on the administrative pay plan, on the technical pay plans, all of the pay plans that you have that are for permanent, full-time staff. Okay, it doesn't include the substitute group, and there's probably some other groups, the hourly pay folks and those kinds of things. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Question, but that would include, like, the cafeteria employees and the bus drivers?
Yes, it would, it would, yes. Okay, we move into now some of the mandated FTEs that we have to work with as we develop the fiscal year 20 budget. The first one is a new SOQ, a change in the SOQs that the governor has proposed. And it's pretty significant. If you look at, it has to deal with school counselors, guidance counselors. Right now, the ratios under the SOQ requirements is five hundred to one in elementary schools, four hundred to one in middle, three hundred and fifty in high schools. You can see the proposal is a three hundred and seventy-five to one at the elementary level, three hundred and twenty-five to one at middle, and three hundred to one in high schools. So this is a pretty big shift, especially at the elementary level. This is not a one-year proposal. His plan is to do this over three years to eventually get to two hundred and fifty to one. Now, this is part of the governor's plan to beef up safety and security in schools. Okay, and the thinking behind this is that the guidance counselors are meeting with a lot of students, a lot of students in the schools. And that they may be in a position to identify problem areas of safety issues and those kinds of things early on. And if they are, it might prevent a tragedy at a school. So this is part of that initiative. And it's one that I feel like that probably most school divisions in the state would support because it does provide another tier of support in the schools dealing directly with the students. But it does carry with it a cost. So if you look at this, staff members and instruction put together what the cost would be using the change in the SOQ for FY20. And you can see at the elementary level, it would require four point two FTEs, at the middle, point one FTEs, and at the high school, point seven. Bringing up it to a total cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand for five FTEs. I want to use the, I totaled this slide intentionally because I wanted to emphasize something. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, remember those composite indexes we talked about. Of that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the state is going to end up paying a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The local government and the school division is responsible for the remainder of two hundred and sixty-four thousand. So you see how those composite indexes play out in even something as simple as a change in the SOQs. So effectively, what it comes down to is about thirty percent of the cost of the guidance counselor change will be paid for by the state, and the other seventy percent must be paid for by the localities. Yes?
So we were talking earlier about how the SOQ are standards, correct? But you're saying in the area of counselors, we are below SOQ in the new, I mean, if you're saying we need to hire additional, that means we are below what we all think is already low?
Not necessarily. If you go back, let me pull the slide back up. Look at the elementary. The present requirement is five hundred to one, and we're meeting that requirement, five hundred to one. The new requirement will be three hundred and seventy-five to one. So now, there's a lower threshold for the student-teacher ratio, or the student-guidance counselor ratio here, which strives additional counselors. That's where that four point two is coming from.
But I mean, I thought we were already operating of SOQ.
I would have to call on instruction staff.
Yeah, we're certainly meeting SOQ standards with guidance counselors. But as the standard has changed, per the governor's change recommended here, we would have to add five counselors to meet standards again.
To be at SOQ.
To be at SOQ.
Yeah.
You know, is it still a minimum standard? Yes.
And people don't come in parts in.
No, they don't, they don't. But this is how the funding is done. So.
This is just the first year.
Yes, sir, it is the first year.
Do we, we estimate what the second and third year would be?
I have not seen those ratios. And they probably won't roll out until the next budget rolls out for fiscal year 21. But the goal is to get to.
Continue to.
Yes, yeah. They're going to incrementally work on this till it gets to two hundred and fifty to one in fiscal year 22.
But because, I know that's how the math works, but because people don't come in parts, does this then compel us either to exceed this to get to a whole person, a whole, you know, or are we deploying more itinerant people if we stuck to the minimum standard?
Yeah, I don't think we've made the decision as where we would deploy the extra counselors right now. We would look at the needs of the school, the needs of the population of the school, and then allocate appropriately. Obviously, the idea is not to have itinerant counselors moving around the system, but to place full-time counselors where they're most needed. Probably the most we might do, depending on how we look at this, would be a point five. And we wouldn't do any more than a point five at two different schools. But again, we haven't gotten down to the details of how we'll use the staff. We just know we have to do this to meet SOQ standards.
The reason I ask, and I understand you haven't made that decision yet, and won't probably for a while, but do we need to program in more money because of how they need to be deployed, or may need to be deployed?
The standard is across the system. So the standard does not apply by level. So we would meet the standard with five, and then we would deploy the staff.
Not, okay.
So we wouldn't be behind at middle school if we don't add point one. It's total numbers, total system, but this is how it breaks down with our current staffing.
That's, that makes sense, thank you.
So, but to Dr. Beers's point, if we were to just project, if we were to be at two hundred and fifty to one, how many additional counselors would that be? Because at the elementary level, that doubles them.
Yes, that's right.
And there's, you know, obviously percentages all the way through. So it would just be interesting to know that if the governor says that, okay, twenty-year, twenty-twenty, this is going to be what the SOQs are, and we're going to pay you a glorious third of that.
Right.
These is the other two-thirds of the money that you're going to have to come up with.
Yeah.
We can certainly build those numbers for you very quickly, and that could be part of our next budget discussion. But you're right, we only get money for one-third.
And then I guess my question is, like in many programs that begin with some support, then eventually, the state or federal governments pull back, and the local government becomes completely responsible for that.
To an extent, because it's an SOQ.
Right.
It's always, but where the state pulls back is when they change the LCI.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So as long as it stays in the SOQ, it's, you know, it's not like it's grant money that's eventually going to die, it's.
There'll always be some, is what you're saying, okay.
Right, some.
Yes, some.
But what teachers and the public don't appreciate is that when the governor says, we're going to do this, they don't appreciate that they're, and we're going to do it, and we're going to pay for a third of it.
Right, but the other thing is, I mean, this is proposed, this isn't, hasn't passed the legislature yet.
Right.
Right, the legislature hasn't approved it and funded it yet.
And I would say it's something we're very supportive of because of increasing mental health issues in our schools. And one of our strategic goals is focused on looking at the role of counselors and the percentage of time they spend actually counseling, and the number of students per counselor. So our thinking of where we need to go as a system is right in line with this. We just won't be fully funded for it.
Next area we're going to look at of mandatory FTEs is special education. And you'll see that there are three teacher FTEs and one speech-language pathologist that's going to be required to be put in place for fiscal year 20. Ms. Bourgeau is going to, our senior director of student services, is going to present some information regarding this.
Good afternoon, ma'am, chair, members of the board. Every year, as you know, school divisions are required to submit a December one count, which is like a snapshot in time of the number of students that we're serving with, students with disabilities that the school division is serving. And that becomes the funding factor for both state and federal funds that we do receive for students with disabilities. What you see up here is the ten-year trend in students that we serve within our division with disabilities. You'll notice that this year, we took quite a jump and an increase of a hundred and fifty-one students, which we do see as significant, especially in relationship to the fact that our enrollment overall has stayed fairly stable. In looking at some of the reasons behind that, we do know that we had a hundred and six newly identified students, K-12. As far as bright beginnings goes, we had, in the two-year-old category, which is part of our federal requirement, is to serve students that are identified with a disability beginning at age two through age twenty-one inclusive. We had a sixty-five percent increase in two-year-olds. We went from fifteen students to thirty-eight students. We also had a pretty significant increase in the number of students that were identified under the category of developmental delay, which is typically bright beginnings. That's a category that you're only eligible for through age six. So typically, that is a category we see predominantly in bright beginning students. In addition, we had a twenty cent, oh, I'm sorry, a nine percent increase in students with autism, an increase of nineteen students, a twelve percent increase in speech-language students for K-12, in addition to those students in bright beginnings, an increase of fifty students in the categories of either specific learning disability or other health impairment. We did see a slight decrease in the number of students in orthopedic impairment and multiple disabilities categories with a decrease of about six students there. But overall, we saw increases in pretty much every disability category. Yes?
So is this because maybe some criteria for identifying students as special needs has changed? Or are other localities seeing the same great increase? Or are people moving into our school district?
There have been no changes in the regulations. The regulations were last developed in two thousand and nine, if I recall. And those are, they're very specific state criteria for eligibility. There are actually worksheets that the state provides that students have to meet Part A, Part B, Part C, depending on the worksheet, in order to be found eligible, and also still be able to identify that they need specialized instruction. So that, the identification process has not changed. You had two parts to the other part, which, do we think more people are moving in?
I'm just curious, as, you know, our surrounding school localities, are they seeing these dramatic increases, or are they kind of seeing a decrease, which would be offset by our increase?
I can try to get that information for you. No, I think it's very serious.
When we benfork ourselves against others, we're slightly higher, yeah.
We are, we tend to be slightly higher. We think that there is a trend to become part of our school division, but it's hard to actually identify the specific numbers.
And what you going to do about it?
Just a curious.
Yeah, I know.
And then, last year, with our operating budget, we tried to make some strides within special education to get us away from SOQ above and beyond. So if we stick with this, does that get us right back where we were?
We're going to show you that in just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're okay. The next slide actually shows our, historically, how we have added positions over the past five years for both teacher count and teacher assistance. The teacher counts are SOQ requirements, the teacher assistance are not. But if we don't have them, that can impact the teacher caseloads even further. You do see that for last year, we added five teacher positions. And this is an example of how it's something we continuously monitor. We actually had four approved in the budget, and we had to add a fifth one because of the caseloads. So this is something that we continually monitor, and the trend, and we haven't finished pulling those numbers yet. We've had to do that the last few years. We try to anticipate, but we have had to have them added. If you recall, we did something similar to this last year. We've broken down the caseloads by elementary, middle, and high school. As a reminder, a teacher's caseload is the equivalent of twenty points. A student can count as one to two and a half points, depending on the percentage of time that they need direct special education services. So if you have less than fifty percent of the day, you count as one, a student counts as one point. If they have services more than fifty percent of the day, they count as two points. And it's our students that have more significant disabilities, like our multiple disabilities or significantly involved children with orthopedic impairments or autism, that may count as two and a half points. Those are not as high an incidence number as our one and two-point students. But that all impacts the number of students a teacher can have on their caseload. Based on that twenty marker, you see here the number of caseloads by level that are either below, at, or above the SOQ requirement of twenty points. So for right now, our snapshot in time for December, we have ten caseloads that are over the SOQ maximum, and we have twenty-five and a half that are at the SOQ maximum. And we used nineteen or higher because one point would put you above it, nineteen point five or higher.
In response to your question, Ms. Coogas, in addition to the information, we didn't go, we didn't make any progress beyond SOQs last year. Our staff were just to meet SOQs in the area of special education. English learners, we added above the SOQ.
Sorry.
And they are not included in this presentation tonight because they're not mandated and SOQ-driven. However, we will talk about that at the next presentation.
And I don't mean to add to your work, and maybe this is a bad idea, but the bar graph, the green, or I guess tan on the screen.
Yes.
I don't want people to think, oh, that many people are below, it's fine. You know, so I wonder if there's kind of below and really below. I mean, because you don't want to convey that anyone's really below.
And because of what you see on the screen that is blue and yellow, we actually monitor that month to month. And we have been, have in the past few years, had to make mid-year adjustments with how we're staffing schools. So if there's a caseload that is below, that teacher may become a shared position between two schools. We are continually monitoring that, but that's an exception. Most of them are, if you think about twenty points, most of them are around seventeen points. If I had to do an average, I can get it for you. But there's not a lot of wiggle room.
I think, from my perspective, below is ideal because then the teacher has more time to meet the educational needs of the students. But we don't want to convey.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, because if you are at the, if you are at the twenty, that is the minimum requirement.
Is the maximum requirement.
Right.
The minimum amount of services provided.
Oh, yes, sir.
Provided, I mean, depends on what your perspective are, perspective is. And I know in the past, we have been below that, better than.
So historically, for me, just to put perspective on it, my first year here was two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. And during that budget cycle, we actually cut some special ed FTEs because our below was so below. So we have seen absolutely a shift.
Yeah, so this is just in another instance where we are getting closer to the minimal state requirements.
Correct.
You know, getting closer to being just the standard SOQ division versus having the services that we think we should have.
And this is, you know, it's a number, it's how we do it based on SOQs. You know, behind that are students and families and accommodations and accountability and monitoring and all those things that go into the special education process.
Yeah, and as you say, it's a number. And so it's easy for people to sit and look at spreadsheets and look at numbers. But behind that's a family and people. And it may be one, or it may be one point five, or it may be two today and one tomorrow. And there's a lot that goes into that.
Well, the other thing, too, is how many students are in inclusion classrooms, how many are self-contained, all those. And the public doesn't know all that, and so it's really, it isn't, they aren't just numbers.
No, they're not. They all have unique needs, and we have teachers that work very hard to address all those.
If I could just mention, we have put three additional teachers to try to stay in compliance. That really is a minimum. We could ask for a lot more right now, but we're trying to say, this is absolutely man, to stay within the mandate and the minimum standard. Would we want to have more students to, or teachers to serve our most needy students? Absolutely.
Special ed is not ESL.
Correct.
Regarding contractual services and anticipated increases there for special education, you will see three areas. education, you will see three areas. The first is the base tuition for our private day school placements. We currently have about 18 students that receive services in a private day placement, and this is based on trend data for increases from year to year. Right below that is related services for those same students. In the past few years, most of the private day schools have changed how they bill us, and we have the base tuition, but if a student has related services, for instance, if they have speech and they have OT, we'll get separate bills for the speech and the OT. So again, that's based on trend data for seeing increases in those costs. And finally, the third one is just an anticipated increase in tuition for the special education portion of New Horizons, which encompasses the Center for Autism in Newport Academy.
Is that increased place, number of students there, or the tuition increase?
Typically, there's a tuition increase. That's a fairly modest estimate.
So just to be clear, the private day school placements is not the placement at New Horizons?
Correct. New Horizons is considered a separate public day, so when you look at the continuum of least restrictive environments, at would be before a private day placement.
Is that $4,300 that's mentioned here, is that per student?
That's.
Total for all of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bourgeois. Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership at the elementary level, Mr. Scott Thorpe, and he's going to go over required staffing for bright beginnings preschool program.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Our current elementary school enrollment shows that we have over 98% average school capacity. We talked about that this fall. Currently, we have 366 bright beginning students. Currently, we have 72 students that are on the bright beginnings waitlist. As a result of this, and our school capacity concerns, we are planning to expand our, currently we're at 30 classrooms across four schools. We are looking to expand to a fifth site. We're looking to move some classrooms to a fifth school site, DJ Montague, for September The positions about which I'm going to go over right now, these are mandatory positions in order to meet the needs of our students. So the first two positions are duly certified early childhood and special education teachers. And the first teacher would be an itinerant teacher. And basically, itinerant, this is someone who can provide services to students in the classroom. In bright beginnings, they also may provide services to students after the bright beginnings day, or they may, in fact, go to the home of the students to provide IEP services. And the second duly certified early childhood sped teacher, that will be for a 31st bright beginnings classroom in order to meet the enrollment and required IEP minutes for our students. Our next line item is an instructional assistant. If we're going to be adding a 31st bright beginnings classroom, we're going to have an instructional assistant in that classroom. It's not our practice to have a bright beginnings classroom teacher without an assistant. And our last item is a part-time educational interpreter. An increase in our special education caseload requirements necessitates a half-time educational interpreter in order to meet this increase.
Thorpe, two questions. So by expanding to a 31st classroom, does that mean that we'll be able to pull some of those 77 children off the waitlist? And how many children will be pulled off the waitlist?
Average class size is anywhere from, anywhere from seven to 12 students.
Small. And then, what does the educational interpreter do? Is that language interpreter?
American Sign Language.
Or foreign, like ESL, any and all?
Correct.
Okay, so I have a question about that. Is that, the educational interpreter, is that sort of like a contract basis? Like, if you need someone with American Sign Language, you would be able to use those services of someone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thorpe, given the conversations that we've had about our need for space at the elementary school, I, let me be clear that I understand that this need exists in our community, and I think we could do a better job by expanding our pre-K services even beyond this, because the waiting list is there and the need is real. But that said, I would like to, at some point, have a better understanding of why expanding to 31 classrooms is mandated. I'd just like to understand why we're compelled to do that as opposed to strategically choosing to do it.
Sure.
So you don't have to answer that now, you can if you want to, but I'd like to really understand that.
I'd like to start to answer, if that's okay? And so while we mentioned that we've got currently 366 bright beginning students and 72 on the waitlist, 217 out of these 366 are receiving specialized learning services. These are students who have IEPs. In addition to that 217 students, we have 51 students that are in the special education eligibility process for bright beginnings. And so those numbers, coupled with the fact that we have a 65% increase in our two-year-olds with IEPs, these are students who are going to be with us, we're going to need a 31st classroom and an increase in staff in order to meet the needs of these students. But I would be happy to take back your question and respond to that in a more detailed way.
So it's our, it's our local needs, it's not some state mandate that you're talking about, when you say, based on our needs, to meet the needs of those students.
To meet the needs of IEP caseload requirements.
Which is a state requirement.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, so that, I just want that clear.
Now, this is driven by state mandate and special education requirements.
Yeah, we need to do it. We have to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think Dr. Beer's question is, this isn't an optional program that we have, that we're doing because we think it's a good thing to do. It's a state-required program.
And the number of students needing special education services increased to such an extent that we are not serving or able to serve other students who also need services through bright beginnings. And that's where the waitlist comes in, where there are other students that we can't serve because we're meeting the needs of special education students.
So one of the questions that Mr. Thorpe could take back is, how come, how can we have a waitlist?
It's not our desire.
I understand that, but I mean, but if we're, if it's a state-mandated program and we're supposed to be serving these kids, how can we have a waitlist? And how come we're not compelled to expand it so that the kids who are eligible for IEP services, that are two, two-plus, how can we not have a program to serve their needs?
Have they gone through the eligibility process? Or is it just the number of students that are at a particular age, or, because I think that's a really good question, is, if they've met all the requirements to be eligible, why aren't we being compelled to serve them?
And like I said, I don't expect you to answer that now, if you're not prepared. I mean, just to.
I'll say this, and I'd be happy to expand more at a later time, but I do know with respect to special education requirements, if there is a two- or three- or four-year-old who is on the waitlist, and she or he has been determined eligible for special education services, we're required to meet their needs.
Right. Joyce.
So, so can I extrapolate from that? The six, what, 72? We don't have anybody in that category in the group of 72?
That's actually, no, that's not true. 19 of the 51 students who are in the eligibility process are actually also on our waitlist.
But if they are found eligible, then we would be required to provide them services and find the personnel to provide those services.
And then, just to clarify, the 150 extra special ed kids were not bright beginnings?
It did include.
It did include them? Okay, so it does include.
It includes zero, actually, the way the December 1 count goes is from zero to two and then three to 21. There's two different categories. In the zero to two, ours, obviously, that are reported are two-year-olds. But that's where we saw 65% increase. We had 15 two-year-olds the last year, and we have 38 this year, with others still in transition.
Just to make it clear for me, so the 72 or the 77 that are on the waiting list, those children are currently going through the eligibility process, and that's why they're on the waitlist, because they're in process?
There are 51 students who are going through the eligibility process, and those are students who are in bright beginnings, and there are 19 students who are not in bright beginnings who are in the eligibility process. So some of the students that are part of the 72 are in the eligibility process, and others are not being considered for specialized learning services, and they're simply on the waitlist.
This, one other question about this. Are there any students that are in bright beginnings currently that will be kicked out of bright beginnings based on eligibility of other students?
No.
Okay.
Additionally, we have mandatory increase in some contracted services that we provide, so I'm going to be shifting from early learning to testing. We have been, for a couple of years, been participating with the Northwest Education Association's Measures of Academic Progress test. This is our growth assessment. As a result of an increase in fees for next year, along with an increase in the number of students, there is an estimated increase of $8,410 from last year to this year. So for instance, we, currently at the high school level, we are using MAPGrowth assessments with students who participate in year-long Algebra I. Next year, we are planning to expand that to include, for instance, high school students who participate in geometry, so that we can measure growth with more students. Additionally, we use Power School Assessment and Analytics. This is one of our programs that anchors our Forwardive Assessment Program, and we've been using this to benchmark student progress for years. As a result of an increase in fees, we anticipate increases of $2,725. We also participate in WEDA testing. This is the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Program. We use that to measure students' language proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. As a result of an increase both in the number of students participating and an increase in the fee, we anticipate estimated increases of $5,100.
Okay, let's move into another area of mandated FTEs, dealing with assistant principals. And Dr. Worley and her staff have worked through the numbers on this. And as you can see, looking at the current number of APs that are in place right now, we have four at the middle school level and six at the high school level. The projected enrollment for fiscal year 20 is 6,471 students at the secondary level, and the SOP requirement is one AP per 600 students. So you just do the math on that, it comes up to 10.8. So we really can't hire an eighth of a principal. So what we're looking to do is add a whole AP FTE. So that would be $110,000, and that does include the fringe benefit cost associated with that.
Get kind of a short one.
Yeah.
Will that AP be assigned to a school, or will...
Well, as I understand, I'll let Dr. Heron speak to that.
Once it's funded, we'll decide where the need is with regards to a school. It could be assigned to two schools, but it's more likely to be assigned to one. So we'll be looking at student achievement, student data, and assigning to the school that is in the most need.
So now, I'd like to call up Mr. Landers, the Senior Director for Technology. He's got several items he wants to present tonight as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. The first item, as part of the profile of a Virginia graduate requirement, school divisions are required to offer a career and readiness course at the middle school level. We're planning to take advantage of an online course produced by WHRO, and this associated increase would be for the additional licenses that are needed to be able to cover our middle school students in Canvas, which is our online course management system. Excuse me. Discovery Education is our media center online video repository and serves all schools. This increase would provide the additional licenses needed to cover James Blair Middle School. Due to the timing of the license renewal, they did have it this year, but it was through a one-time purchase, just simply because of the timing of the licensing. And the other licenses and services estimated increase are standard inflationary increase for various software and systems that support all of our schools, such as World Book Online, our Fallout Library Management System, NearPod edutyping, Explore Learning, and other titles such as that.
Do we occasionally do kind of an assessment of, with all these licenses, of the usage and find, you know, that, do we kind of do that critical assessment of this is a system that people are, students are using less and less, and so therefore, maybe we shouldn't increase it? Could you just talk to the listening public about the process you use?
Yes, ma'am. That, it's actually an ongoing process. Ms. Bowen in our Instructional Technology Office, her and her staff maintain the instructional licenses. So they keep a running total of the number of licenses that we have in each of the schools, number of students or teachers that are accessing those systems, and they review that, manage that every year. And as an example, we went through a very extensive review, I want to say, two summers ago, and cut out approximately 20 titles that were no longer being used.
When you say titles, are you talking about, let's just take one for example, if there's one title, is that an online course?
No, sir, not an online course. These are actual software systems, software programs.
Do we have online courses?
We do have online courses.
And how many, and what's the cost of a typical online course?
Well, how many online courses? Let me see if I have that total here.
I mean, you're not.
To give you an example, let's see, at the high school level, we have Art Foundations, Biology, English 9, Biology 1.
What's the typical cost of one of those going to be?
It varies. If it's something that is produced locally, we pay our teachers to do it. They are paid a stipend over the summer to develop that course, so it's local. If we purchase it from an external vendor, normally, it's bundled into a program, into a number of titles that we bring onboard at the same time. So the individual cost of an individual course, I could certainly get that for you, but it's kind of a bundled package when we purchase those.
Is it 30, $40,000? More?
Let me see if I have that for you.
That's okay. I'm just curious, because I've just, I've been talking to other staff in other school divisions in terms of their need for online courses, and we have facilities down in Norfolk for creating those kinds of courses, and I'm just, I'm just curious. And I know what the cost is for one of those, to create, you know, a totally new, it's about $50,000. So I'm just, I'm just curious about that.
We take advantage of a number of sources for the online courses, such as the locally developed, our partnership with WHRO, as well as EdMintim, which is another provider.
Do we ever split the cost with another school division? Suppose we have a need for an online course, and another district has a need for an online course, and, but we don't really want to pay that full, you know, write the full check, but we split it? Do we do anything like that?
Actually, we do that quite a bit through our WHRO partnership. WHRO will coordinate the development of that course.
It's more cost-effective doing it that way.
Right. And they may take advantage of some of our teachers, some from Virginia Beach, and they will collaborate to develop that course.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, moving to technology services, our Windows and Office 365 license structure tiers are renewed every three years according to Microsoft and state contract requirements. With this year's renewal, Microsoft has added an advanced threat protection component to assist K-12 licensing tiers with protection from various... assist K-12 licensing tiers with protection from various cyber threats such as ransomware, phishing emails, things of that nature. To, and also to protect end-user devices at the device level so that our teacher laptops, one-to-one laptops that go home, they will be protected through this as well. This increase reflects the addition of the ATP services as well as additional licenses needed since our last renewal, as well as an adjustment to our appropriate E3 educational licensing tier. Synergy, so.
I mean, what is the, I mean, this is an increase, right? The fifty thousand, so how much are we paying initially for that service?
Total with this increase, the total will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that breaks out to approximately three dollars fifty cents per licensed user per year.
For student?
For, for all students and staff.
And staff, okay.
Yes, this covers everybody.
That's pretty high, actually. I mean, that's a big increase because if it's going from.
That is third.
It's a third?
It's, it's a one, for a one-time increase, it is more than what we would normally see. However, taking into account the advanced threat protection that we're getting in addition to that and that it is a three-year renewal. It's, I can't say it's not significant, it is.
I realize that. Okay, so that's for three years? That is for three years?
That's our current three-year renewal.
So, it's not fifty thousand dollars a year, it's fifty thousand for three years?
No, ma'am. It's fifty thousand increase per year over the three years. And then we'll go through another renewal, review.
I work for them.
Wow. So, that means we're at one fifty now and next, next year will be at two hundred?
No, sir. No, no, we would be, still be at the one fifty level.
Next three years.
Okay, moving to synergy.
I realized my mistake after I said it.
Synergy is our student information system and this cre, this increase reflects the addition of online student registration, which will be rolled out with this coming spring's kindergarten registration cycle. Yes, this, this cap, a long time coming. This capability has been requested by parents and staff for several years, provides an additional benefit to our families and our students. They'll be able to complete the majority of the registration process before they ever have to walk into one of our school buildings.
So, does this include that big packet that people have to complete every new school year?
The majority of it, well, not every school year, no, that's, this is not the.
Packet, it's just registration.
This is not the, what, what's the name of that packet? The back-to-school packet.
It doesn't eliminate the back-to-school packet.
No, this, this is online registration for new registrations for new students coming into our division.
Can we move towards making that online?
We are actually looking at that.
Yeah, that would be great.
And as part of that, does it include, is it smart enough to check a person's property or location for zoning and some of the issues that we've run into before?
Well, the, the parents or guardians will still be required to bring in some type of evidence, be it a electric bill, whatever, to show where they live, but they can complete the bulk of the form before they ever come in to provide that evidence.
But there's still a check process to make sure that what they're providing is actually valid.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to sign an affidavit. Thank you, Mr. Landers.
You're welcome.
We're going to move into an area now that is not a mandated area for increases, but it's an area that I would, I would venture to say is probably very important to the vast majority of your employees and that's health insurance. And so, Mr. Baker is going to present some information on the healthcare cost increase projected for fiscal year twenty.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. We're using a conservative estimate as we did our renewals of five percent for our health insurer renewal. Potentially could go up, it could go down. We should have the final number for our renewal before the meeting two weeks from tonight, but we're using a five percent renewal estimate. Currently, the school division is paying approximately eighty-three percent of the cost for health insurance and the employees are paying about seventeen percent of the cost. So, on this slide, a five percent increase, keeping that current share would equal this new amount of an increase of a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. So, the, each one percent increase or change either way adds a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to the good or the bad of the budget here. We feel we have an excellent product for our health insurance. It does include a PPO medical, it does include dental, it does include vision, and for a very reasonable price. Not all our employees participate in our health insurance, about three-quarters do. We have a little over thirteen hundred employees participating in our health insurance benefit. So, just a reminder, health insurance does differ in that sense than a potential pay raise would. A pay raise would include for, as we mentioned earlier, for everybody that is in, I guess, the admin scale, the support scale, or the teacher scale versus the health insurance. Only three-quarters of our teachers participate in that and a pay raise potentially would affect people's retirement, too. We have, regarding health insurance, there are a lot of options for our employees and a lot of choices. I wanted to share some of our cost share for some of our popular options. We have a five hundred dollar deductible plan, our K-500. On this plan, our employees are paying, the employee pays twenty-seven dollars a month or about, or about four percent of the cost for employee-only coverage. And we have about a hundred employees participating in this plan. Employee plus spouse on the, with the five hundred dollar deductible plan, the employee pays two hundred and twelve dollars a month or about seventeen percent of the cost of the plan and we have approximately thirty employees in this plan. And then also in our five hundred dollar deductible plan, employee plus family, the employee pays two hundred and sixty-six dollars a month or about fourteen percent of the cost and we have approximately a hundred employees on this plan.
For the family plan, is it similar to this, where a family plan is what, whether you have two children or eight children?
Correct.
It's the same?
It's correct. There's no additional cost for three, four, or five children. And then, and the family plan includes the spouse. Our employees also, like I said before, have choices. They can potentially upgrade and they can buy into the, to the lower deductible, the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan. They're getting an excellent deal. This does not cost the school division any additional money because the employees bearing this cost of upgrading to the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan. So, for this plan, our employees, the employee only, are paying eighty-seven dollars a month for the plan or about twelve percent of the cost. We have three hundred and seventy-five approximately employees on this plan. On the, this plan with the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, employee plus spouse, they pay three hundred and twenty-three dollars per month or about twenty-four percent of the cost and we have approximately a hundred and fifty employees on this plan. And then, for the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan for employee plus family, the employee is paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month or about twenty-one percent of the cost and we have over three hundred employees on this plan. It's, this and the employee only in this plan are our most popular plans.
I don't, I'm trying to understand what the different, so I understand the middle one is what the employee pays, so the total is the.
Purple on the right?
The tan plus the blue is the purple?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Right.
And that, that includes coverage up to the age of twenty-six?
Correct, I mean, by law, yeah. That hasn't changed, the laws hasn't changed there. We also do have a high deductible plan that we offer our employees. For this plan, employees can have employee-only coverage and pay fifteen dollars a month or about three percent of the cost. Or for employee plus one, the way the plan design is, they could pay fifty-six dollars a month or about six percent of the cost. And for the, the family, they could pay a hundred and nine dollars a month, it's about eight percent of the cost. We don't have many employees participate in our, our plan, probably less than thirty total. My opinion, most employees, you can pay a little bit more and get into the five hundred dollar deductible plan and get a very, very, very good value. So, our employees will choose to do that.
Give less than thirty on this whole graph.
Yes, sir. And, and correct. We don't, even though we give a hundred dollars a month towards their, their health savings accounts and you can, a lot of benefit with that, potentially even use it for other things and towards your retirement, but we don't have a lot of participation because, like I said, here you can, you can get in back into our high deductible, our, I apologize, our five hundred dollar deductible plan at a very good value. We have a great product.
Pay twelve extra bucks a month and get, and get a lot of, a lot more risk coverage.
Correct. Mitigate that risk.
So, Tim, we have, so it's like close to eleven hundred employees are participating in these.
I tried to show you the most popular, we have over thirteen hundred, yeah, correct. Total, for, for saying, I, I picked the three, the three most popular on, on the five hundred dollar deductible and the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, just trying to show you. We have folks taking a little bit more here and there and it's already getting, it gets a little convoluted to try to show apples to apples.
Just on this, your screen, it's tan or whatever, but here it's, it's sort of turquoise. I, I say this every year, but the lack of parity between the, the two fifty and the five hundred and the high deductible in terms of our contribution still troubles me. You know, I see, I like that it's equal between two fifty and five hundred, in the five hundred across the tiers, but we're, we're contributing less to the high deductible plan for those employees.
We, we, I appreciate that. We, we do give the hundred dollars for the, the health savings account and so there may be there's an opportunity to increase that up to the same amount that we give for the others. The last slide I showed is, I know this slide's very busy, but we're trying to show a lot of information here and compare and it's, and again, like Dr. Beers was saying, it's, it's hard to compare a lot of information and compare apples to apples. You know, overall, we, we feel like we have an excellent plan for a reasonable price. An item to potentially consider is the employee, employer cost share. And again, our division's picking up about eighty-three percent of the cost and the employees paying about seventeen percent of the cost. On this slide, we're trying to compare to our neighbors to similar products. So, on this plan, we're trying to compare our two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan to some of our neighboring districts for a pretty comparable product as best we could.
And once again, the purple is what the employee pays, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And so, you know, this is for our two fifty plan where the employee only, they're paying eighty-seven dollars a month for the two hundred, for the, what I call an upgrade to the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan. So, on this slide, for a WJCC employee to cover their family is paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month and our neighboring, if you take all our neighbors' information together, and this is out of pocket, so our employees are paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars out of pocket to cover their family, our neighbors are paying six hundred and seventeen dollars to cover their family. So, if I average York, Newport News, Hampton, and Gloucester for the out-of-pocket, for the employee coverage, they're paying six hundred and seventeen dollars and our employees are paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So, so I think this is a really important slide for everyone to see because when we look at what we pay with our salaries and we show up like being number seven or number nine in compared to, you know, I think it's, it's really important to see because if there's a five hundred dollar difference between, for families, between Hampton and WJCC, that's six thousand dollars a year.
Right.
So, I mean, that's a, that's a big consideration.
Right.
I think the, the difficult piece is getting the word out because when we're employing new staff, beginning teachers, they really don't look at this. It's their salary that attracts them to us, not the health insurance.
There you go.
Yeah, but new teachers don't come with the families, generally speaking. So, so if you, if you go to the eighty-seven versus fifty in York or, or a hundred and fifty-three, that's, gets to eighty times twelve, which is less money than, than when you got the family thing working. So, it's, then you know, the new, the new teacher scale, you know, it's, it's, you know, kind of different than.
Well, so that's interesting. So, that's something that I think is kind of interesting when we go into budget talks to look at that, that the new teachers might, we might want to look at a higher, more, I don't know how we, you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Because of the new, younger teachers without families, then.
Well, the bigger picture is, and this is off-topic, is what, who does WJCC attract? Do we attract the teachers right out of school or do we attract the teachers from five to ten years that have started a family? Because I think last year you told us that we hired about a hundred and twenty a year and twenty-two of them have no teaching experience?
This year's thirty, yeah.
Thirty, so.
We're poachers.
So, and I'm not ashamed to say it, we're poachers, I mean.
But it, it's interesting, they vary, the question of health insurance very rarely is part of that decision to come to us and very often they realize when they get here, oh, this is great. So, I'm not sure it's promoted as a benefit. I'm not sure it drives people coming to us from anywhere else because I don't think, I think it's a, in some sense, a hidden secret of something that we do very well.
Is that something we can, can promote more on our website or, or something, or in, I don't know, is there something we can do to get the word out?
Sure.
Like tell the Virginia Gazette who might be reporting?
Well, but I could, like Dr. Heron said, when, when we go out recruiting and, and talking to schools, especially on the campuses, they don't ask about this part of it and most of them, it's not a.
But, but for employee only, it doesn't really affect them that much.
Sure, sure.
What we need to have is the Richmond Times and.
The Richmond Times, so yes.
And the Virginia, the Virginia Pilot say, hey, WJCC, you can get six grand extra by coming theirs.
I could ask Mrs. Cox about the communication side of it.
Well, before Ms. Cox sits down, I just want to say, you know, and this isn't a criticism of this slide because I think it's great and this is a very complex, but one thing that's missing is the quality of our healthcare. So, it's not just the price, we also have very good plans. I mean, these are.
That's, yeah, what I started with, we have a PPO medical and our plan also wraps in vision and dental and, and so we have an excellent, excellent plan with, with, you know, with the PPO, they can go to almost any doctor they want to go to.
Right, right.
That's really important. It really kicks in between the age of thirty and forty and it's got any glasses and, you know.
Having a baby.
See where he didn't understand that question? Comment.
This is my new eyewatch, I'm so sorry.
I hope I haven't been recording you.
So, there was a question about whether or not we could include more information and marketing on our sites and yes, of course, we can do that and we can also work with human resources for materials as they're recruiting, but it's also important to remember that not all of our employees take advantage of our healthcare. So, when you're talking about folks joining, some may have, you know, a spouse that they're taking advantage of their insurance or military or something like that. So, that's not, it certainly is worth promoting, we have an outstanding plan, but that increase isn't necessarily going to be the draw because we have such a, a smaller percentage taking advantage of our healthcare.
I know, as you said, you were asking about the family plan, you know, like I said, our, again, our family plan on the two fifty deductible, they're paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and everybody else there averaged together is paying six hundred and seventeen dollars a month out of their pocket. So, we have a very, very, very robust plan, excellent value. As, as we look at this, potentially it might not be out of line to have our employees and, you know, the actual healthcare consumers in this potentially share and more of the cost.
So, the, the question I would, would ask the board just with considering some of this information, is this an area you, you wish us to look at and bring back further information and ideas with looking at cost share or anything else to do with, with health insurance? Knowing that a percentage change in cost share here is a small amount compared to potentially being able to give a larger raise at the other end to up our salary scale?
I think I would like to rely on the school administration to present some of those options to us so that we can weigh in on it, is that possible?
And I think, and we're just asking, do you want more information? Should we bring you options for your consideration? That's what we want from you, some guidance.
Yeah.
Except, didn't we discuss this last year? I mean, that was quite a, when we were talking about increasing the cost share, we, we did discuss that last year, I mean, not that we shouldn't this year, but I think we want to be careful that we don't out, you know, make it more difficult to attract good people with a higher salary, so.
that we don't out, you know, make it more difficult to attract good people with a higher salary, so...
I think the other thing too, and Mr. Baker brought, we, we looked at last year. You created two or three different scenarios
Right.
in terms of the salary increase and how much that, I, I think that's helpful to see that.
I think that if we did that, we'd want the public to understand that a, a typical bus driver, if they get a certain percentage raise, they would end up doing this. If the healthcare was moved to, to cost share, this would be the difference, that they still would be ahead at the end of that. I would want to use personal examples or particular examples to illustrate if we do bring more information at your request.
Just kind of for basic information, I mean, a, a beginning teacher, if they got a, a 4% raise, the teacher would increase like $1,720 a year. A beginning bus driver, if they got a 4% raise, would increase their salary $623 a year, just for, kind of, kind of let you know. We can bring you lots of different, or several different scenarios.
Right. I think it would be helpful, because again, a raise affects 100%, well, 100% of eligible people. Don't forget that word. But this would impact fewer, and so understanding the cost and the impact on how many people so that we can make, and I really like talking, I, I know you had to talk about percentages to illustrate what percentage of the whole cost people, our employees were bearing, but I do like talking about our cost share and dollar numbers and figures.
Yeah, well, a raise, a raise affects 100%. This only affects 75%, which is just about everybody as well. And then we had to, I had to put on the other side of that, how much money are we saving by changing the cost?
Well, exactly, yeah.
I think the other thing, you know, we're talking about recruiting, is, okay, so maybe we're number seven, and maybe somebody down the road is number four, but they pay more, their health insurance costs more. So it, it, it's, it could be almost a wash. We don't really, we don't really know. The employees probably don't really know because they don't do comparisons like that. I'd be curious, I, I wouldn't, you know, just take, just do a, you know, a, a single example just to, just to see how that would work, and, and it may turn out that's not, you know, so we're number seven based on just salary alone, well, what if you put that other thing together, actually we're number two?
Total compensation.
I think that's a great idea. I'd love to see where we stack up when you talk about salary and healthcare benefits.
Total compensation.
Total compensation.
The only thing...
Because it's sort of a red herring, isn't it? Because you, you, it's, everybody's always talking about it, but, yeah, but what about the other expenses?
Well, I, I would add too, in talking with health insurance, you always have to remember about your custodians and your bus drivers and your teacher assistants, and those folks who don't make, you know, they make $15,000 a year, and a lot of those people might be working strictly for the health insurance.
Right.
So you want to keep it affordable, but I think what Mr. Baker is pointing out, that there's some room to take a look at some of this, to see if there's some areas we might be able to do some different cost sharing percentages.
I mean, my concern about, I think total compensation, Dr. Beers, is a really good thing to look at, but we're deciding to, to invest a larger portion in benefits and, and maybe at the cost of a higher upfront salary, which we heard from Mr. Baker and Ms. Cox that people are not really asking about, so that means they might not be interested in. So I think it's just something that would be helpful to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, take a deep breath, because we're finished with adding money to the budget, and let's talk about taking away some money. Okay, this is a, a projection for estimated savings, and this is, this is for attrition. Let me try to define attrition for you. That's the savings that the school division incurs when an employee retires. Let's say they have 30, 35 years' worth of experience. When they leave the division, most likely someone's going to get hired at a lower, on a lower step of the scale. They might be beginning-year teachers, they might only have five years' experience or 10 years' experience, but there's a pretty significant cost variance between those two. A million dollars. I, I was just curious to see how mu, how many staff members that would take, how many teachers it would take. And if you save $20, excuse me, $20,000 per teacher that retires, you only need 50 to come up with a million dollars. So it's not a huge number when you think about it. The number of a million is, is large, but to get there is, is not that difficult. In fact, this is based on attrition that has already incurred in the division.
Isn't this a recurring number?
It is, it is. Every, you should see...
So it's not really budgeted savings, it's just a recurring number that happens every year when we get attrition?
Well, no, no, it is, it is a savings, because you use these dollars to reprogram them to other areas of the budget.
Sure, but it's, but it's always, it's always there.
It occurs every year.
Every year it's a million dollars.
Thank goodness it does.
Eight hundred thousand. It's a different number.
How, how many years of experience, like if you're a teacher that comes in with 15 years of experience, how many years of experience do we give to teachers coming in?
That would be a question for Mr. Baker.
15.
We do give 15 years?
Yes.
Okay. So like if somebody has 20 years of experience, they, we give them 15 years?
20.
Buddy?
They go on the scale, the step that they, that they come in with the experience.
Because I mean, I know some of the, the surrounding areas, they, like if you have 10 years of experience, they might only give you five years for the pay.
Our scale's pretty deep, you, for the bachelor's degree only, we go up to 27.
But I mean, we give...
So if you come in with 25 years' experience, you get 25 years, and that's up to 25.
That's what I'm trying to understand, yes, okay.
That's up to 25.
I mean, that's an important thing to know.
But that doesn't, that doesn't help Dennis's savings number.
No, I, and that would make it harder, much harder.
There are plenty of school divisions who cap it at a lower.
Yes.
We go all the way up to 37 steps.
So there's no cap?
We cap it at 37.
Right. Absolutely wonderful.
Hire the next year.
I would like to point out too, that there is not a concerted effort to hire people to generate attrition savings. They hire people based on their qualifications and the need in the division, so there's not, well, okay, we're going to save X amount of dollars. That's not the way this is done.
Can you say that one more time, just to make sure that everybody's hearing that?
Yes, sir, I can say that one more time.
And they're, you know, we're hiring people right out of school, simply because there aren't, there...
There's a teacher shortage.
We don't have a lot, yeah.
This is exactly right, and so it, it's really a function of the availability of people to fill the jobs. And right now, as was just pointed out, there's a teacher shortage. So we're trying to get teachers, a lot of cases are right out of school, or we're working, trying to pull them from other school divisions in the region. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough thing, especially when you get into the areas like special education, you get into areas of sciences, it's very difficult to find people in these positions. And so, you know, a lot of times it might be someone right out of, right out of school.
Right. But, but Dr. Beers, we're not hiring them right out of school. We only hire 20 out of 120.
We did hire 20, did you say 20? Yeah, we go hire 20.
Out of 120?
Yeah, but that's still...
So we only hired, what, 15%?
I would imagine, I would predict that that 20, it'll, it will go higher over the next few years.
I bet it won't.
Well, either, because if you're people entering education...
Because the number of teachers coming out of schools are less.
Yeah.
I could just caution, we're using this million dollars to begin to balance with our needs, but we are employing more teachers with more experience, so the savings will not be as great in this as the teacher shortage becomes greater, and, you know, things can change. This is a, this is money that doesn't exist until we hire differently, which could happen or not happen. If we give a 4% raise next year, we may have fewer teachers leave.
Sure.
And so forth, we may not have the attrition savings. So there's all kinds of things can impact this, so even to use a million dollars, it's a calculated risk. It doesn't exist until it exists.
Budget number.
And, and, you know, the other thing is, and, you know, your point's well taken, is, is that experienced teachers like to, you know, this is, this is a very attractive place to work as a teacher. And we, I mean, we're concerned about shortage, but compared to an awful lot of school divisions around the state, we really get the cream of the crop, so...
This fig, this figure is very much based on a history and a pretty fair calculation of what is likely to be there in attrition savings. So we have a level of comfort with using it, but it may not always be like that.
Okay, now let's move into trying to pull all this information together, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. So let's, let's revisit the revenue calculation. It was at $4.1 million, and again, I would emphasize this is very preliminary. I can unequivocally state, these numbers will change. This $4.1 million will change. So on the expenditure side, we've talked about a 4% or a 5% average increase, and as the slide points out, for a 4%, it would be $4 million, and at 5%, it would be $5 million. Those are two scenarios. Now, as we also said, you are only required at this point to do the 2%, but if you look at this from the standpoint of you want to improve your marketability and your competitiveness, a 4% or 5% is what the scenarios that we're looking at here. Mandatory increase in FTEs for the change in SOQ for school counselors, $375,000. Special ed FTEs that are required, $300,000. Mandatory secondary assistant principal of 110. The bright beginnings FTEs of $195,000, and then the contractual services that, that were reviewed for special education, accountability, and technology totals up to $148,000. And then your health insurance cost estimated increase, if we use 5%, would be $934,000. And I do want to emphasize, Mr. Baker indicated this earlier, but this slide does imply that the employee would pick up their share of that 5% increase. So this is only the employer's share of that 5% increase. We are, Mr. Baker and his staff are monitoring the health insurance. They're working with our provider to get them to, they're going to be releasing some, I guess you might say, some more final information to us over the next several weeks. So once that happens, we'll be able to hone in on that, what that real percent is going to be. Hopefully it will go down. If it does go down for every percent it goes down, that saves you $183,000. So it's a pretty significant savings. Then, of course, you've got the attrition that's been added, subtracted out. Okay, now, this is the, this is the compilation slide that really pulls everything together in one picture. The revenue, then you've got the preliminary increases in expenditures, and that also takes out the attrition dollars. And you can see, we're, we're showing two scenarios. You provide a 4% average salary increase, or you provide a 5%. The difference between the $5,620 and the $6,620 is the 4% and the 5% salary bump. Now, that would leave you right now with a preliminary shortfall between $942 and $1.9 million, okay? You've got a long way to go yet, in terms of finalizing any information. At your next works, work session, you're going to be looking at some additional cost and some potential additional savings, okay? And so you've also got to remember that the state budget is still hanging out there. You don't know really at this point what the local contribution is going to come back at. So you've got some variables to work with. So this $942,000 using the 4% range is still a viable number. I mean, in terms of trying to close, I'm going to call it close the gap. I think it's still possible to close this gap using a number of different resources. And ultimately, the final resource would be asking for an additional funding from the localities. But of course, that would be the course of last action. You want to look within your own resources and see what you can come up with before you take that particular action. But we're encouraged about this, to be frank about it. When we first started working on this, the number was a lot higher, a lot higher. So we've gotten it down considerably, and so we, we feel like we're, we're on the right path. Okay, next, next I want to just kind of review with you, again, that this is preliminary information, and the information is going to change. You have, at your January 22nd work session, you're going to be presented with a more, I guess you might say, thorough picture that encompasses most, if not all, of the increases and the revenue resources that you have to work with, and any savings that might, might be available. So this is really kind of setting the stage for the big picture. This is looking at total revenues, as we know them today, and mandated cost, compensation, and health insurance. So there's some other things that are out there, but they will not be significant as the items that we've discussed tonight. Now, you've got next steps, and if you look at this calendar, the pre-budget public hearing is at your next meeting, and that's when the public has an opportunity to come in and speak about any items they would like for the superintendent of the school board to look at within the budget, it's being, as it's being developed. Then you have a work session on that same night, and then the superintendent is slated to present her budget on February the 19th. You'll have a joint work session with the county and, with the county board of supervisors and city council at some point after, between February 19th and March 5th. That date is yet to be determined. Then you'll have a public hearing on the budget on March 5th. Now you have two dates for budget approval, March the 19th and March the 26th. It all depends on how far along you are. If you are able to get it all completed by March 19th, you can do it on that date and submit it to the localities. If not, you can push it to March 26th. All of these dates are geared towards you meeting the state requirement of sending the budget to the local governments by April the 1st. And that concludes the presentation for tonight.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions about what was presented to us tonight?
I thought, I thought it was a great presentation. I appreciate the, appreciated you putting, pulling all this together. The, the one thing we talked about with salary adjustments, you know, I, in my, the years I've been here, I'm, well, you haven't given us a raise since whenever, and it's like, it's never our intention not to. So if we're not going to, you know, do substitute drivers and substitute teachers, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that we're competitive to our, to our, our neighbors, and that, you know, I don't, I don't want to put some, it's never been my intention not to give somebody a raise, so if it, if we're not going to give somebody, just let us know that we're not, and that we understand that.
Good point.
And no, just thank you very much. This was very informative, and I appreciate your time and effort. And thank you for being willing to step in and help.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We need you.
I've enjoyed my time here.
Yeah, I'm glad you were able to step in and help us out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And just one clarifying question. So on the 22nd, we'll be presented with some cost, potential cost savings, which will include, health, health insurance is one area that you'll dive a little deeper in, but there may be some other areas that you're thinking where we could save money.
There may be. I think a better way that we'd be looking at it is to look at our strategic plan and what we need to deliver it, and we're all looking at every budget cost center and asking, where can we realign the current money to take us in the direction we want to go? So we'll tell a story with regard to how we're going to fulfill pieces of our plan without adding more money to the ask that's already there this evening.
So one thing I would like you all to think about and provide feedback to Dr. Heron on is the format for, for, you know, today and then tomorrow, because we've typically done this on a Saturday morning. I, I like not having to get up, but whatever you all are thinking about this different process, please share that with Dr. Heron so she can, you know, think about that. I wanted to add, I didn't ask this question about health insurance, and I just think for the, for the listening public, it's important to understand that we are members of local choice, and so that is a marriage, if you will. And so it's not like we can go out tomorrow and shop for a cheaper HMO product or a high deductible plan that's all, you know, just a skeleton product, that, that, that that's our partner and it's a high-quality plan. And so shopping around for something for the sole purpose of saving money is, is not anything we may want to do anyway, but it's not even a choice we have. Is that correct? Okay. Another thing that just jumped out at me as we looked about, you know, the AP in particular, as we look at mandated increases and we use data to determine where to deploy those new resources, I'm concerned a little bit about parity and equity both, and how they intersect with one another, and if it means that we really, the SOQ tells us we need one, but the data tell us we need two. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to, I would prefer not to add one because that's what the SOQ says when in fact the data tell us we need two, if that makes any sense. So just when I saw the additions to SED and the APs in particular, and then counselors, if we need more, it's our obligation to ask for more. So I just wanted to at least talk, at least I wanted to mention that and talk about it. And the other thing that strikes me every year that I wanted to mention tonight is, we know when we plug in our 10-year projections at the back of that thick budget document, it's, it's a formulaic thing, just like the localities do, and I, I'd like to get away from that because it's not true, and we know it. from that, because it's not true, and we know it. We know that our increases are going to be higher because of health insurance, or because of, you know, SOQ increases, or because we've seen a trend in SED or ELL, and so I, I'd like to be a little bit more transparent about our, our belief that it's going to be maybe more over the next ten years. That's, there's already a gap, when you compare their numbers to ours, but let's, you know, if we have to make that gap bigger, to be honest, let's, let's do that. And I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Herron and your team, Mr. Jared, thank you very much, it was a pleasure to meet you and to work with you for a short time, and thanks everybody else who was, who made presentations, you all did a fabulous job, thank you.
Just, if I could just personally thank Mr. Jared as well, I have learnt an incredible amount about school finances in the last few weeks, and he's been incredible to work with, and I want to say a personal thank you for all of the work you've put in, and in understanding our system so well and so fully in such a short time and presenting tonight, thank you, sir.
Anything else? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.